This meeting is the Gadsden City Council now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Yeah.
I know that Councilmen Williams and Avery are in the building somewhere. I'm sure they'll join us shortly. Councilman Echols?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present. Our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Jeremy Ward to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for the day that you've given us. And we pray you for the freedom to be able to meet the governed. And Lord, I pray for those who have said in leadership, God, that you would give them wisdom, that you would help them to make decisions that bless the city and glorify you. And we pray you for all these things.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for the music, Bob. That's a hundred dollars fine.
Yeah, we do.
You say something about turning you. I turned it off, is that what you were talking about?
I turned it off completely this time.
He decided he would, our grand interest, he would play some music for us. He just picked the wrong tune, that's all.
If he was playing Gloria to old Georgia, I wouldn't care. It wouldn't bother me a bit.
Please, please, please.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in a city council meeting held on January the fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, can you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of January the tenth through the sixteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, can you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor. At this time, we will have a presentation from the National Center for Sports Safety.
First of all, I just want to thank the mayor and the council for letting us come do this. My name is Cortland Tyson. I'm with the National Center for Sports Safety. We are a nonprofit located in Birmingham, Alabama, and we were founded by Dr. Larry Lemack, who, I don't know if any of y'all know, is a renowned orthopedic surgeon. And he was seeing a lot of problem with youth sports injuries happening, just from parents and coaches not knowing what to do in the event of an accident. So that's why we founded this opportunity and started this organization. So one of our missions is, like I said, to keep athletes safe on and off the field. And one thing we've realized is that most parking wrecks do not have an automatic external defibrillator. Excuse me. Hopefully, they will never have to use it, but in the case that you do have to use it, they will save a life. There's over 38 million children that participate in sports each year, and if just one of those children gets a cardiac arrest, this unit can save their lives within minutes. And I know we've all seen, I'm so sorry, I've got something on my throat. We've all seen the injuries happen and heard the statistics, and that's why we, along with Alabama Power, has provided funding to give the Gadsden parking wreck a unit at no cost to them, as well as a fully stocked first aid kit. We were going to give it to Mr. Kerry Payne, but I don't think I see him, so I guess we'll just leave it with y'all. And I hope y'all can get it to him.
Give it to the mayor. Give it to the mayor.
Give it to his boss.
The mayor?
That would be great. That would be great.
Thank you for the water. But like I said, I really hope that y'all never have to use this, but if you do, it will come to hand and save a life, not only of a child, but perhaps spectator, a parent, a grandparent who's in the stands. And if y'all have any questions, we'll be happy to give y'all more information. We've got some little behind, leave behinds we'll leave with y'all that tells you about the unit, what, how to use it. It is fully automatic. It will tell you everything to do. There's no class you need to take. It tells you to open it up, take a patch out, so no questions at all needed. So I just want to thank y'all again, and like I said, I will leave this with Mr. Mayor Hyten.
Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Is that from the meeting we went to at Gadsden State a few months back?
It is. So we give it right over.
It's amazing. It has a person voice that tells you everything to do, like plug it in and...
Thank you very much.
This is being donated by Dr. Lemack's foundation.
Yes, it's the National Center for Sports Safety, so that's his foundation nonprofit that he started.
Right.
So this is on behalf of him and Alabama Power, who gave us a donation in order to provide these around the state. And Gadsden is one of the ones that was chosen, so we're glad to be here.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. I may try this out on him, okay?
We might as well leave it here.
All right.
All right. What happened to the ones that we bought, we're going to buy and put them on each floor of the city hall and so on?
I assume they're still there.
Anybody know where they are?
Those don't talk to you, though.
We were putting one on each floor.
Every other floor, wasn't it?
Every other floor?
I don't know. I think, I was thinking that the fire chief has...
They're on there?
Yeah.
Well, really, you know, if I go into cardiac arrest, I want somebody to know where one of them is. That's why I ask.
You're not going to get no mouth-to-mouth resuscitation.
If it happens to you, you're going to die.
If you do, I'll make sure that we stand you up with that thing. It may not work. It'll light you up.
You just keep biting away on me, I don't care. Can we find that defibrillator?
It's amazing to me how one little sound just brings out everybody and wants to talk at the same time. Can we go on now?
You haven't seen nothing yet this week.
I want to hear what Billy has to say.
We appreciate it, the defibrillator. I've got one right here. It'll knock you down if it needs to.
All right.
Unfinished business, nuisances on property located at 1125 Forest Avenue have been abated, therefore, there's no unfinished business today. Number nine, this is a time and place as advertised, you look, the public hearing allows anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1628 Arrowhead Drive in District One. The last known owners are Sidney Nelson Cobb Jr. and Deborah Frank Cobb. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Yes.
Would you please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address?
It's Sidney Cobb, currently living in Opelika, 206 Camilla Avenue. My apologies to the council. I may have not done this entire process correctly with Mr. Harbison or Mr. Greer. I don't know if he needs to present his part of it before I present mine or I...
No, it's your turn.
I received a notice back in 2012, I believe it was, if I got my paperwork correct, that the property needed five things done to it. Roof, window screens, I never figured out the window screens part, because my windows never had screens on them to begin with. Foundation repair, the driveway repair, and I think some masonry repair, because I have a lot of work on it. Yes, I do own the property. It is mine. My intentions were to repair it, do what I had to do, because I have actually family that would like to move into the house. I'm doing this on my budget. I thought the, I did the repairs to the foundation. Next thing I figured was more important was the roof. The March storms last year solved that problem for me, taking about a fourth of it. So what money I may have built up for the painting, which it needs a real good coat of paint on it, went to the roof. So I'm still in the process. When I started this process, I went upstairs into the window and, because I, I'm sorry, I don't do this as a real thumb, got a building permit, asked, do I need to come back every six months, is it good for a year, how long's it last? It's told as long as I'm making improvements on the property, as long as I'm doing things to it, there's no issue. My money pretty well got taken, that's a brand-new roof on it, like $6,000, almost in all the plywood and everything on it replaced. My next plans for it were to go ahead and paint it, get that out of the way. Of course, the weather ain't exactly great at minus five degrees of zero. So then I get this letter from Mr. Harbison's office, "Sorry it's reached this level. I've probably done something wrong in all this, but sorry, never done this before in my life." That's all I can say. If I was receiving any kind of notices in the mail or something like this, for some reason, the postal office let this one come through, which by the grace of God, my daughter found it in the mail Friday. They haven't allowed others to go through, and according to the post office, I do not have any restrictions on my mail coming to the house, but I don't make them yellow things up either. So if there was some miscommunication between myself and Mr. Harbison's office, I'm sorry. I was, like I said, I live out of town. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. In March of this year will be two years since this case started. I will agree, most of the issues were on the exterior of the house. You'll see in the picture, the backyard is completely cluttered with junk, trash, and debris, used building materials. I'm not sure how long it's been since the owner has been on the property. I understand he is out of town. The immediate neighbors deserve better than this. We're asking for a resolution today to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Brian, if we vote to abate this nuisance today, which is truly a nuisance, because the people in the neighborhood deserve better, they don't deserve to have that type of structure around them, in front of them, behind them, all around them, is there a timeframe? I'm just asking, is there a timeframe in which Mr. Cobb can bring this, raise this up to standard and not abate it, and not go through the whole process? In other words, is there a timeframe that he could allow, you could allow him, and is Mr. Cobb willing, to accept that before we move forward, before you move forward?
To answer your question, absolutely. I mean, the case is open. It's not any more open today than it was almost two years ago. So anything that he does between now and when public works gets the notice to proceed will certainly work to his favor.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb, can you do that?
Yes, sir. I don't know how much time Mr. Harbison would allow me. As I said, it's not the greatest weather to be painting a house, especially for the paint. When I pull the tigers door as soon as February rolls around, the weather gets worse, within 50 degrees, stays pretty good, I'll, I believe really that's the only issue is it really needs paint, because it's got a brand-new roof. The roof is better than the house in the neighborhood.
Yeah, well, I understand, but then there's a, there's this condition of the debris and stuff outside the house that needs to be...
And the debris, I'm not sure what...
Take a look at the picture and move forward with that. That needs to be corrected immediately, whether or no whether. And you will speak with Mr. Harbison about a timeframe as far as what you need to do to prevent public works from coming in and doing any other work on the house, okay?
Sure.
All right. Thank you, Senator.
Okay.
Call for the vote. You've got a motion, the second.
Take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number ten, our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 78 Cusa Street in District Three, Edna Ross being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in January of last year. Been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Sorry if I made it look like...
You'd be pushed over.
It's a half gone now.
They fall down before we get a chance.
I don't think there's any chance for rehab on this one, do you?
A good win, a good win to take care of that one for you, Johnny.
You just blow through it, isn't it? Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, can you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eleven is a resolution authorizing agreement with Bridge Inspection Services LLC. This is for services associated with the inspection of the bridges located on Broad Street over the Cusa River and Forest Avenue over the Republic Railroad to comply with state regulations in the amount of $5,250. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, can you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twelve is a resolution authorizing agreement with Jones, Blair, Waldrop, and Tucker. This is for supplemental fees related to the South Eleventh Street Bridge replacement. The amount is $25,748, and the city will be responsible for 20 percent, which is $5,149.60. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
That was a question that, this was already in the budget to work on, so everything is go, yeah.
Any other? Clerk, can you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business is very new business. Somebody has to...
We have three items.
Mr. President, I do actually have one item of new business, and I hope I didn't leave it.
I just want to say that.
Thank you.
You got it?
Yeah. All right. This item of new business, I'd like to make a motion that we consider this item for new business today. It's a resolution authorizing payment to Aldat for the Safe Routes to School project at Yew Brown Elementary.
Second.
Clerk, can you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
There is a, as it relates to, we've talked about safe routes to school in the past. These are grants that we've received from Aldat to improve the routes to and from our schools. This particular project is for Yew Brown Elementary, and this resolution is regarding a payment that is due. So again, this resolution is designed to ensure that we have the authority to make this payment.
Okay, this is, there was a 100 cent grant, but we changed it, made it, okay. Any other discussion?
This is, you're well familiar with Yew Brown and the congestion they have dropping the kids off. The school's built in a neighborhood, it's always been a problem, whether it's solid or not.
It's just bigger and bigger, though. We got about 400 kids down there now. It started off, it was, there's so many kids now, you can hardly get up and down the street in the morning and in the afternoon.
Jeremy, I'm sorry. We also have four or five others, I think, or three or four, I know this, getting close in the pipeline, don't we, on these Safe Routes to School that we're about to get to?
We actually have Donaghy and Strickland.
That's what I called, okay.
For the sake of information, I want to reiterate the Mitchell School problem on the mountain. Of course, I've been saying this since 1994, but anyway, I'd like to be in check and see if there's not some way we can get the traffic off of the full lane up there. Still traffic, it's very dangerous.
Keep on driving, keep on driving.
Oh, I would. I want sidewalks and curbs and gutters, too.
Don't the school system apply for these grants primarily?
They do.
And then we deal with it.
Safe Routes to School.
Clerk, can you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Yeah, I've got a couple. Mr. President, first one, I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider, and this is a resolution authorizing change order number one for the Central Carver Museum project.
Second.
Clerk, can you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Make a motion, we accept.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is change order number one for the Carver, I mean, the Central Carver Museum project in the amount of $9,500 to rainbow pipe and metal. This is for earthwork, brick and block additions. I think we also ran into some stabilization problems over at the project, and, but anyway, this is to get all that taken care of.
Any other discussion? Clerk, can you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have one more item, Mr. President. This is a resolution authorizing capital equipment financial agreement with BB and T Bank.
Second.
Clerk, can you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I ask for passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, we're in the process of updating our equipment. This is a financial agreement, and I don't see our finance director here, but primarily, this is a five-year deal, one point, how many million, Mayor, is it?
1.5.
1.5, 1.6?
Yeah.
Yeah, 1.6 million dollars. And we're hopefully going to be able to free up some funds over the period of this agreement to outright purchase some property, I mean, some equipment. One of the main things that we're going to be dealing with, of course, is 10 police cars or sewer truck, where we're going to be spending $250,000 on. That's to clean out the sewer line with all that, all the leaves that have stopped them up, that we didn't bag, and the rain washed them down in there. But no. Anyway, hopefully, like I said, over the life of this agreement, we will be able to purchase some outright equipment, too. But what I really want to talk about in this, we did send this out to banks, we got some flak from our last proposal that we did, and I just want the public to realize, sometimes when the administration have their frustrations and their hands tied when it comes down to professional services, you don't have to bid, you don't have to do a formal bid process when it comes down to professional services. We sent out, let me see, two, four, six, eight responded, but we sent out, one, two, three, four, five, six, we sent out 14 proposals, at least, 15 proposals, I'm sorry, and we only got back eight.
This is banks he's talking about?
Yeah, I'm sorry. These are banks that we send proposals out to. We only received eight back, which is almost 50 percent, a little over 50 percent. I think there were some flak from some of the banks and some of the people who called me the last time we did one of these and said they didn't have an opportunity to participate. Well, as you can see, we gave everybody an opportunity to participate, and everybody didn't. In particular, one of the banks who called me and jumped on me about the last time we did a financial deal, and they didn't get a chance to participate. So I understand the frustrations of the administration, but because of those calls that I received the last time, I asked them, would they please, you know, send out everybody one, and let's just see what happens? And, you know, it's not a waste of time, but again, we probably got the same results by them not sending our proposals before and just talking with the banks, as opposed to sending our proposals, and only half the folks responded. But anyway, just wanted to make that clear. You want to say something, Mayor?
The BB and T got to bid at 1.63 percent interest.
Well, it's open for public record. I think the news media has a copy, and they're going, I'm sure they're going to print all of that, and who did respond and probably who didn't respond, but anyway, I just wanted to kind of clear up the air on those things. But that is the administrative priority, I mean, you know, they can do what they want to do when it comes down to professional services, as opposed to bidding. And when we did go through the bidding process, everybody did not participate, so, anyway. Call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, new businesses, is there any other? Apartment reports, committed boards over there. Rewired by the mayor and the council. Mayor, you want to start?
Thank you. Just briefly, we had the mayor's ball for the Cultural Arts Foundation and the Boys Club the other night. Had a big crowd, seemed like everyone had a good time, and I think we actually got, I don't want to give the exact number, but it was a really good turnout, and we made some money to support those groups out there, and I think they partnered up with Cultural Arts Foundation to also get music, art, and a number of programs they have will be available to Boys Club kids, too. So it was really good. Thank everybody that participated.
Bimmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was there at the mayor's ball, and I am truly pleased with the participation, with the attendance, the number of people in attendance, and I thank the mayor for that. Cultural Arts and the Boys and Girls Club, we are the beneficiaries of this, and I need you to keep that in mind for next year, when the mayor's... you to keep that in mind for next year when the mayor's ball comes around, let's be in attendance and let's support those two organizations. Litchfield Middle School is still on our radar, we're not going to let it off of the radar, and we made a lot of progress there and I thank the, I thank those parents and teachers and students and all of the faculty and administration there and the parent teacher organization for that participation to improve the status of Litchfield Middle School. Ms. Duramus, you have a new volunteer that's going to, Mr. Duramus, I should say, because Pat isn't here, you have a new volunteer that's going to be coming over to work with you, man, gentleman that's going into retirement and he has, he and his wife has committed that they're going to be over there working with you all to improve the status of the situation that we have at Litchfield Middle School. So we appreciate you, Rob, and your wife. I will be having a District One meeting on Monday night, January 27th, at East Gazzan Recreation Center. Ms. Brian Harbison will be our guest that night, and I'm going to encourage everyone who has a question or who has a situation or any interest in nuisance abatement, in procurement of property that the city has, and to understand, to get to know what your residential responsibilities are in the city of Gazzan, I encourage you to be there for that meeting. This is District One, but the whole city, anyone who cares to come and be involved in that meeting is welcome to come because there'll be good information coming from the building department. I have a, I have a problem, I don't have a problem, I guess, but the speed limit on East Broad at Donahue Elementary School, now I appreciate the new speed limit signs, you know, they've gotten the most modern sign, you know, warning you to slow down, you know, the old things overhead that nobody paid any attention to are gone and we have, actually have up-to-date speed limit signs on East Broad there at Donahue Elementary School. But the thing that puzzles me is the speed limit went from 15 miles an hour during school, during the school time, the schools in and out, to 25 miles an hour. And that's a very, very, very narrow and small area right there on East Broad, so I have a question as to why, and I will pursue that, as to why the speed limit went to 25 and did not remain at 15 miles an hour right there on East Broad there at Donahue. But we appreciate the new signage, you know, it is visible, you can see it, there's no excuse now, but it just tells you to slow down to 25 miles an hour, but we will continue to pursue it. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items, I, many of us had the opportunity, all of us had the opportunity and many of us attended the MLK celebration event last night, and our speaker did a great job, Mr. Quentin Ross, Senator Quentin Ross, did an excellent job, and I think overall it was a very good program. So once again, it's the 28th observation and do want to thank WMGJ Radio for once again putting on a very good, good event. I was very pleased with the turnout and again, it's a very good, very good program. The Highway 411 project, just very quickly without, you know, running the risk of restating some of the things that have already been said, in my last district meeting, there was some discussion about the expected or anticipated duration of that project and there was also some, a very good question raised, I think, about, something I've thought about from time to time, and that is the merging aspects of the existing 411 or Albert Raines Boulevard into the bypass. And I've been, and Jeremy, if you choose to speak to this, you can, but I've been assured that it's, the engineers have done a very good job of focusing on, to the naked eye right now, it appears that that's going to be a, almost a right turn to get off of the existing 411 corridor onto the bypass. And what I've been assured is that from an engineering standpoint, they've done a good job of mapping that and designing that so that it's almost no turn, so that, so that once the project is complete, it'll be a very smooth transition from the existing corridor onto the bypass. So stay tuned as it relates to that, but the projected duration of the project's about 18 to 24 months, as I understand it. So, and of course, periodically Aldat, through the MPO meetings will be providing, and through our engineering department, will be providing updates. So that's just, again, in response to a couple of questions that came up during the meeting. The, there was a report on, relative to data on arrests that came up this week and The Times ran an article that, you know, based on that information, that it hit the wire, and I thought it was very interesting. You know, that data comes from the Bureau of Labor Statistics and also the arrest records that are out there. And what was interesting is it speaks to the impact that it has on black males and in particular, but what was also noticeable is that, you know, the, there's also a, there's not nearly as visible a gap between the statistics for white males in that same age group, even though the statistics for black males are staggering. You know, again, it was very noticeable that there isn't as much of a gap. Why is that important and why am I even bringing it up? Well, you know, I think it speaks, it speaks a great deal to the socioeconomic situation that a number of people are facing right now. If you didn't know this, the Department of Labor on its strategic plan cited background checks and the negative impact that they have on minority males as one of its points of emphasis last year in 2013. Now, I'm not sure if there'll be any 2014 carryover for that, but that was something that was, that was cited by the Department of Labor last year. Now, you know, what does that mean? Well, you know, if I am an 18 to 20-year-old or 18 to 23-year-old male who has a conviction for a non-traffic offense and I go to apply for a job, during that background check process, I all of a sudden am screened out to some degree, and it makes it very difficult for me to procure employment, and it also increases the likelihood that I'm likely to go back into some criminal element to try to, to try to meet whatever financial need I may have. So just something to think about, you know, it's, again, I appreciate The Times for printing that article, but it's also, again, as a city, something that we should look at in terms of, you know, how we may be able to impact, and I don't know how we can address that right off the, right off the top, but I can tell you that from an economic standpoint, I couldn't be prouder of our Commercial Development Authority and our Industrial Development Authority and the work that they do in terms of recruiting industry to this area. In these very difficult times, we're able to secure some projects that are, that are very, that are very difficult to obtain. So, so again, just a piece of information to share, and I think that kind of serves as a good segue into the point that Councilman Harris was making about, about Litchfield. And I want to echo what he's, you know, Mr. Duramus is one of my dear friends and anything, you know, a lot of what you see in me, he, he has a large, he has a lot to do what you get, with what you get out of me, because he sown seed in me for years. And, and so I really appreciate what he and his wife are doing in terms of re-energizing the parent teacher organization there, because that's important. But one of the things we talked about with Dr. Miller this morning, and I think those of us who either, you know, who live both in, within and outside of that community, let's be sure that we keep before the school board the reality that when you live in a low-income or socio-economically distressed area and you have students that are coming out of that, their experience at school is much different than the, than the normal kid. You know, those children deal with stressors a much different way. You know, most of us came from an environment, we talked about this some upstairs, most of us came out of an environment where school, church, and home lined up, and so what didn't get taught at school or what did get taught at school got reinforced at church and at home. These kids don't have that luxury nowadays. Many times, you know, what they're getting at school and even at church is totally different from what they're getting at home. And so what we've challenged Dr. Miller to do is to be very specific, there are strategies out there, strategies that are applied throughout the country that specifically address the needs of low-income students, students who come out of low-income scenarios. And, you know, and it's not fun to talk about the fact that Litchfield is, you know, a large number of the students at Litchfield Middle School come from low-income situations, but the reality is, you know, we talk about the 800-pound gorilla in the room, you know, there's another one. I mean, so, you know, we, you know, the reality is those kids are dealing with very difficult situations at home, and the school system and the teachers have to be skilled and trained to address with those specifically, to address those specifically. So again, just something to consider, and I don't want to get into all of that and not miss the opportunity to thank the school system and thank the principal there, Michael Cook, for the, for the progress that they've made, because truly, there has been progress, and a lot of that progress can be attributed to the fact that, one, there's a mechanism that holds the teachers accountable, they're following up and holding the teachers accountable, and that's important, it's very important. And secondly, the students are starting to see it because their parents are showing up at meetings, and again, that is likewise important. That's all I have.
It's interesting that all of these issues are coming up at this particular point in time. We, I had an opportunity to speak in North Alabama and then in South Alabama this weekend on Martin Luther King's birthday anniversary. The theme was pretty much keeping the dream alive, and it's interesting that the things that we, Debrick and Billy's talked about relates back to keeping Dr. King's dream alive. I can give the school system two words, and it's called Steve Perry. I had an opportunity to visit Steve's school in Connecticut. This is a public school, I want you to understand, before I say anything else about this school, it's a public school, it's not a private school, it's a public school. 100% of all the kids who go to that school graduates. 100%, I've got to repeat that, 100% of all of those, and this is in a low-income community, there's projects surrounding the school almost, 100% of those kids graduate. But guess what? 100% of those kids also go to college. So what is Steve Perry doing different than what we are doing here in our school system? And it's simple, it's called one word, dedication. We've got to be dedicated to making sure that our children succeed. You know, you just can't be there drawing a paycheck, and I'm not talking about, yes I am, I started saying I'm not talking about our educators, but I am talking about them, but you've got to be dedicated. But also, there's another prong to that, and that is parents. Every student who goes to that school, parent has to sign a contract at the beginning of the school, and they hold the parents to that contract as well as the students. So not only should the school administration be dedicated, parents are going to have to rededicate themselves to their children. I mean, it's just a simple formula. You know, we all have to be rededicated to make sure that our children succeed. And I know it can be done because it's living proof, if you don't believe it, Google Steve Perry, and you'll see the results as to what's going on. But we've got to keep Dr. King's dreams alive, and that is to make sure that every individual have an opportunity to succeed in this country. The powers that be don't want that to happen. This is an election year, and you're going to be hearing me on my soapbox from now until election time. Ladies and gentlemen, please get prepared, get your state-issued ID so you can go to the polls and vote. Everything starts at the polls. The people who are in Washington dictate policies, the people who are in Montgomery dictate policies, and the people sitting up here dictate policies. And you need to make sure that the folks who are in Washington representing you, the people who are in Montgomery representing you, and the people who are sitting here representing you do what's best for you and not what's best for them. And that's the problem we've had, that's been the theme all over this state. I've heard everywhere I've been about our governor who refused to help the least among us when it comes down to healthcare. I mean, you go figure, this is the poorest state in the country almost, and yet he flat refused to help our poor people who need healthcare by denying them Medicaid. Our federal representatives, our congressmen, every last one, with the exception of one, voted against, I mean, voted to cut food stamps. These are the people that we vote for, these are the people that we send to Washington, these are the people that we send to Montgomery. You need to be mindful of the folk that you send to these places and the people that you vote for. Everybody going to tell you how close they are to God and in their advertisement, they're going to show you where they're at church every Sunday, and I'm trying to figure out what God they serve, because the God I serve would not let anybody starve, the God I serve would not let people get put out of their houses, the God I serve will help anybody and everybody. So it's obvious they're going to a different church that I go to and they're serving a different God that I serve. You're going to be hearing me talk about that from now on, and I just had to get on the soapbox just a little bit this morning, but I'll be back again. That's all I have.
I'd just like to commend the people who are working at, trying to improve the situation at Litchfield, it's appreciated, really. We've got a housing project that's hanging in the balance now, and one of the issues that they have, and this is a major housing project that could happen, and one of the issues they have now is Litchfield's been labeled a failing school, and it's having an impact on whether they would put that project together or not. So it's very important and appreciate y'all's work. Another thing that I, I see one of our county commissioners in our audience, sometimes our county commissioners don't, some of them don't realize that Gazzan's in the county, we in part of this county too, but Commissioner Carolyn Parker realizes that, and she takes an interest in our city government, and we appreciate that very much.
Can I even borrow y'all some money?
Hey, great.
Mr. President, can she come up? She got money.
She sure can.
Yeah.
I want to go to the era.
Oh. Okay.
After the meeting.
That's all right.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to recognize Carolyn also. She's making a dream come true for the kids and the people in District 6 today. Her and Tim Choats, who's another county commissioner, he's District 6 over there, and myself, we're going to represent them some money today with the help of Craig Ford to get their walking track behind their school paved, so it's going to be paved now and all the water's going to be off that and the kids will be able to play, and if it wasn't for all these people's toing efforts, that wouldn't have happened. And I do want to appreciate you and Tim, Carolyn, for all the help y'all did, represented Ford for what he's did for us. I do want to announce, next Tuesday, the 28th, we'll be having a District 6 meeting, it'll be at 5:30 at Banks Park. Come out and see what the district's doing, you can see a police officer, he's always there, Chief's really good about having a police officer to answer questions. It's just going to be an open forum where we can just discuss the district, where we're going and what you want to do, see what's happening over there. It'll be the 28th, 5:30 at Banks Park Community Center. That's all I got.
Man?
I wanted to address what Billy was talking about, the speed limit over there at 15. When Walt was here, he questioned it, and he went to 25. That's what happened state law, I think, was what the deal was. But in the meantime, mine on Knottville Road was 25, and because it's a full lane, it went to 35. So I told Walt, I said, "Next time you question something, don't do it out in the public." Because that's what happened on the increase. I do want to say something about leaves. If you ride around this town, about every third house, there's a pile of leaves all in the yard. Nobody swept them yet. Now, it's not in all cases that... Now, it's not in all cases that this happens, but a lot of people wait until the leaf truck goes by, then they run out, and they sweep their leaves down in the ditch, then it goes in the sewer and stops it up. The other ones just don't do it at all, you know, it blows in my yard. But anyway, I, I would suggest that outside, in lieu of bagging, that everybody pay more attention to when the leaf trucks come around and rake your yard down, and then get on your neighbor, and get him to rake his down, so they can pick it up all at one time, or maybe make two passes in two weeks. But if you ride around this town right now, you're going to see leaves on a third of them.
Not if they weigh bags.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, is keep them away from the bags, and keep them sweeping, keep them sweeping. Anyway.
Is that it?
Yeah, I was just upset about leaves this morning, I thought I'd say that.
Due to the Martin Luther King holiday yesterday, Monday's garbage is being collected today, Tuesday's route will be collected Wednesday, there is no change for Thursday and Friday's routes. If it's not anything else, I'll entertain a motion we adjourn.
So notice.